Hi, Celeste Ferrara from Park City. As a band and a cheer parent, I want to request concerning the upcoming senior rep night. I know that on the schedule here, you're looking into bleachers for Poppi Yoder, or that's where you want to hold senior rep night. Why? I think that we should have it at Helman. We decided that we're doing our football games here. I think the seniors deserve to have a place, to be recognized. You're going to find money, spend money to rent bleachers over to Poppi Yoder? Are they going to be as made that we have here now at the new stadium? I doubt it, and so it won't hold enough people. And if you couldn't do that, nobody will see anything. The parents, it's a big night for seniors. You know, football, band and cheer, it's a big night for them to be recognized for what they've done over the years. And I think that they need to get their recognition. If we have to do a game earlier because maybe we don't have the lights at Poppi Yoder, how are the parents going to get there in time? I mean, I'm a working parent, I'm sure all of you are, that if your game is scheduled early for four o'clock because we have no lights, because the game is going to have to be done before it gets too dark to see anything, I mean, how are the parents going to get there from work at that early of a time if it's scheduled like that? I can't stress enough how our kids are going to be affected by us not appreciating, because they're going to see, oh, look, they tore down the place, they're putting up this or that, and it's not like everybody else before us had. I think the kids, the seniors need to have the recognition, and they need it here at Helman Field. They'll be the first class to be recognized here. I mean, that's going to be a good tradition to start now. We want it to be a community affair, we'll have it at Helman, and I think that would be great. And I bring it up here tonight because I saw on the agenda concerning renting the bleachers that you're putting up for. And I think it's better to step back and say, well, wait a minute, did we think about this, that it was going to be senior rep night when we had the football game, we're going to have this football game? Maybe not. We were just picking on anything, you know, any game. Also, you know, I'm hearing, okay, that's October 31st, Halloween, we have so many senior parents who have younger kids too. What do we do? I know, look, I know you can't take care of everything, but maybe move it to Thursday night at Helman. That way, everybody will be satisfied. I mean, yes, you'll have the fear of saying, whoa, you promised us Poppi Yoder, we have one game there. Well, I think once the community has seen as the last two games that we've had here what a success it was, how great it looks, you know, inspiration, I know my time's up, but I mean, I think that this is something that we should look into. But thank you very much for listening to me.
Okay, thank you. We're definitely going to be talking about that. Thank you. Okay. First thing on the agenda is our obsolete item review. So we've been doing a lot of this lately, and we've been getting some feedback from the crowd. And I think the board doesn't like to ask everyone here in the board as we get started, any problem with anything that we've looked at here, any ideas to do it better? Now's our chance to do that. We have our usual textbooks, equipment, leading log projectors, bikes, things we see more and more. I was just wondering if at some point we're going to run out of things to throw out or get rid of.
Or buy some new ones.
Because we seem to do that a lot lately. So with that being said, does any board members have any comments about items, or under item one, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G?
I have a question. Under, I think it's F, District Office, there are a lot of everyday math study links. I assume most of the, I'm assuming a lot of the stuff under the district office are samples that we got, but there are 83 grade five everyday math study links, and then there are 11 kindergarten everyday math home links, and then there are grade one home links, and then there are also everyday math teacher sets, and that's still the math program that we're using, so I'm wondering why we're getting rid of the everyday math materials.
I know we have checked with Mrs. Colaza, because she is the one that put-
My call, please. That's a great system.
Thank you. We have checked with Mrs. Colaza, and according to Mrs. Colaza, these are things that they are out of date, and we are not using those. Mrs. Schuler, was there anything else that Mrs. Colaza shared with us today? I can double check again with Mrs. Colaza, who's the one that, I mean, she put the list together, and obviously she would be aware of what we're using, so we'll go back and double check with her.
Yeah, I guess I would just like an explanation, because there are some everyday math materials for, they're the reference books that they were put on, and then they were crossed off, and it says that they're keeping those, and they have the same copyright date of 2007, so I would just like an explanation why we're getting rid of the everyday math materials.
Good for you.
And there are, they're on the two different things, because they're on the math science and then the math social studies, because there are teacher sets in the second link.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything? So Kathy will check on this and get back to us somehow before the meeting, and if there's no other objections, then these items will appear on our regular agenda. Okay. All right. The second item is disposal of books. Is that going to be you, Mrs. Johnson?
Yes, disposal of books. We are running into a situation where we have overrun the Karen Share with our obsolete books. We have tried to disperse these books throughout the school district, other teachers. We have tried to sell them on public surplus. Then there comes a time when we've exhausted those means, and now what do we do with these books? Because Karen Share no longer wants them. We do have an opportunity to, Newman Paperboard out of the Philadelphia Eric Tecomi section of Philadelphia is willing, if we have a full truckload, to take them off our hands at no cost. The other option would be to put them into the planal dumpster, because again, no one wants them, we don't have room to store them, we need to find the next route, what we're going to do with these books. So I think this is more of a, here are things that we need to think about, I don't particularly have something in mind this evening, but I did want to bring it to your attention, it's something that we do need to look at and think about until November, what we're going to do with the books that are not selling on public surplus. Again, Karen Share does not want them. So again, if you have any thoughts on that, again, we have one person that will recycle them for us, and we have a full truckload at no cost. Otherwise, they would charge us to come and pick them up. Or the second option would be to put them into the planal trash.
So you're going to look into that recycler, paperboard recycler, and try to get some out? I think they buy by the ton or something like that?
It's not possible.
And other options? So you'll come back to us?
Right, I'm going to come back, but I did want you to be aware that Karen Share is no longer taking this, and we need to make, come up with another plan.
Anybody have any thoughts on it? Just wait and see how that plays out?
Are these library books?
It's all kinds of books. It's library books, it's classroom, classroom library books, it's textbooks. Again, we've overrun.
Are they anything that, like, I know a lot of the schools have those recycling programs that they have within the schools, but are those limited?
Those are limited, and what we would have to do is draw the hard ban, we would have to have someone-
Remove the hard ban.
And actually, we're not getting paid for paper recycling at all. So I guess we would not want to expend district resources, employees, to take off covers.
And why can't they go, a lot of the books go onto the public surplus list, so they're ones that can't go on?
No, they're not being sold. No one's bidding on them.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is the, you know, we've gone through, you know, we shared them in the buildings, we've tried to put them out of public surplus, and some of them just are not selling.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we'll stay posted with updates with that. Enrollment projection studies number three, that is also yours.
That's on some line. Our mass enrollment projection study was done back in 2011, 2012, so we try to do this every three to four years. I did call the Economy League, that's who's done the first in the past, the cost will be about $8,000, and the earliest they could start this would be January of 2015. So I guess I'm asking for the board for direction, is this something you'd like to have done so that we have these enrollment projections for next year, so that if we have to, you know, again, make any changes in boundary alignments, you know, we have it soon enough rather than later, because if they wait much later than January, we'd not have that information back in time to make any changes for the '15, '16 school year. And by then, we're now into the '16, '17 school year, which is five years after this, and that seems to be a long time. We try to do it every three to four years. So I guess I'm looking for approval to have this done in January.
Is this the same company that did it for us for last time?
Yes.
Dr. Kishin, sir?
Yes.
How did the, what were the results of that, and how did it compare with what actually happened?
Okay, I will ask Dr. Brevard, this is something that he works with, because he works with the projection enrollment, so I'll ask Dr. Brevard to provide that information, to do the comparison between actuals to what they were stating.
I think that's really a good question. When, it was probably presented to us once before, I just can't remember.
I don't know, it was, we did it once, yes, but I don't remember the outcome.
I thought I remember hearing Dr. Brevard recently saying that it was as expected a 3% recovery. I think he just recently confirmed that, but it was, I think, a casual remark rather than a presentation.
Because it seems out in the elementary schools, we're hearing more and more, the classes are getting bigger, bigger, bigger. So, I mean, I would think, just my due sense now, I would be interested in doing the next study, but we should maybe tie that in with just revisiting where we ended up, as Dave suggested. So whenever we can do that, sooner the better, I guess. If you need it by January-
Do you want to bring that back next month at finance, or do you want to put that on activities? Where would you like?
You put it where it goes, I guess, I think it's fine. It could be either, but I think-
But we have a meeting scheduled in November for finance, so we'll bring it back at that time.
Is that all right? Because if you want us to do something by January, then we're running out of months. Okay. All right. Okay, the next one, I believe, is going to be Mr. Loffler, bleacher rental for October 31st at Poppi Yoder. Is that going to be, that's Kathy again, or is it Mrs. Johnson, I'm sorry?
Okay, actually, I'm pitching in for Jeff this evening, he's a little hoarse this evening. One of the things that, when we originally started the conversation about having the last football game at Poppi Yoder, there was discussion about needing to rent bleachers and lights. And tonight, I'm going to present to you the cost. Bleachers, and at this point, we can only get 600 additional bleachers, so that will only give us, that will give us seating for 1,800. The cost for those 600 bleachers is $9,200 for one night's rental. There is a cost to rent the lights of 1,400. There will be about 24 hours of man time, three men, eight hours, moving equipment, the concession stand equipment, setting up the temporary AMI audio system, and moving the bleachers, so we're estimating that cost to be about $1,000. And we'll also have transportation from here to Poppi Yoder for the band, which is also estimated to be $1,000. So at this point in time, we have approximately $12,600 in expenditures in order to pull the game off at Poppi Yoder. We just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that, and also the fact that we can only get 600 additional bleachers at this time.
And then extra costs, it's maybe smaller than the $1,000, but we were transporting the cheerleaders and football team?
That was the $1,000.
Oh, so that, all three are in there, so the band, cheer, football.
Right.
Okay, well, thanks for giving us the pricing on that. So going back to where this started, I guess, if you could do this, would you like to, want to just go through this? Where I'm, I'll go first. Where I'm at with this, back when we started the process of moving to Helman, to where, and arriving where we are today, I mean, I agree with the comments from the crowd, Mrs. Ferrara earlier, and all the letters and emails that have come in the past week seem to match up with the way I feel about the situation. I don't know if we need to go back there. Teams don't seem to want to go back there, not the football team in particular, but sort of the constituencies that go along with it, people from the band have sent in emails, the football coach, booster club, cheerleaders. I mean, obviously, Poppi Yoder is not the same field it was, so that plays a role in their decision. They won the last game there, same score as the first game there, it's like a legend in itself. They've got, they've got great memories now from the first two games here, that Nesham game was great, the feeling was great. They started their new memories. That's the message I get, you know, everyone's moved on. So for me, I don't see how I, I don't think I would support us going back there, even though early on, when we first started, you know, I think Dr. Rattigan, you know, did a great job of reaching out to try to soothe the pain. I think that with changes and the results, for me, I'm not going to be able to support spending any money to go back to that field. And certainly, no one else wants to go there. So to just go back because we said we would, I don't think that's a smart move for me, and I think we have to look at how it's evolved, and where we're at now, and how the fans and the community feel about it. So that's my two cents on this particular notice. So if anyone else wants to add something?
Yeah, I believe the only, we can only get 600 additional seats, bleachers, and that is going to put a major problem on anybody that's going to try to attend the game. And as such, I think that the negatives are far outweighed the positives in this whole thing, and I'm just glad to agree that I don't believe this is in Penriddge's best interest to try to create this tide in the past that is really over.
Barry, I agree with you in doing what you said too, and I think we also have to consider that in fact that, as, you know, many of the emails that we've received brought up the point about then the visiting team, you're bringing another team in, you know, we're saying we're limited at 600. We could fill that probably with just our fans alone, is it the right thing to be doing? And I think, you know, much to what Mrs. Ferrara said and many of the emails, senior band members, the senior cheerleaders, the senior football players, I think, you know, their efforts over three, four years deserve to be recognized, and I think that we should do it in the best way that we can to honor those students. So I agree with you.
I also agree, I mean, we only have four games this year, and every one of them has had something going on between the pink gal, the opening, homecoming, and now we have senior night. It's just very important that it's, I think that it's held here, so.
Do you have attendance numbers from the first two home games?
I have an approximate, and I did number that with, we have an approximate of paid tickets. We were right around 2,600 paid tickets, but again, we have to add in, they are the cheerleaders, we have to add in the band, we have to add in the helpers. Again, we have folks that had the suburban one passes, and those I don't have, the number of suburban one passes that came in, or year-to-date, you know, they bought the whole season packet, so, but, you know, 2,600 paid tickets alone is-
Which game?
That was for the first game. I do not have the second game. I unfortunately did not have, did not get Mr. Rapp today to get that information. But even at 2,600, we don't have, we only have 1,800 seats available.
I just want to make one more quick comment too, just from, you know, my own personal experience. I know two years ago, when we had the hurricane in the fall, and, you know, the senior night, that was the year the senior night had to be relocated up to Helman, as opposed to at Poppi Yoder, we were kind of in a reverse situation. And I was up at the game that night, and I think, you know, given that situation, that was completely out of our control with the weather, and we did the best that we could, but, you know, I think that was evidence that there, that night, when you were limited, you know, some of the concerns were, were parents going to be turned away, were there going to be, was there, you know, adequate just for those families? And again, that question raised, like Mrs. Ferrara raised, saying, is this the best, are, were we doing, you know, the best by those students? And I think, you know, that kind of proves to that point that with those limited facilities, we're not doing the best that we can for the students too.
We've got a lot of emails, and I've read them all, and I've thought about it, and so I wanted to go back to what the board actually, what the presentation was, what Dr. Rattigan presented, and what we agreed to. And the wording that I found is, it says, allow the high school football team to play one game of their choice at Poppi Yoder. So it seems to me, it doesn't say that we have to play a game there, that it seems that it's an option, and it seems like the football team gets to choose the game that they would want to play there. So, and everything that occurred is that the football team does not want to play a game there, in addition to, you know, the other groups involved, the marching band and the cheerleaders. So, you know, I agree with what everybody else said, that I think that it's the best choice to stay at Helman Field. I think the first two games were phenomenal, I think the energy and the excitement about the field really shows the community's support, the whole community, everybody coming out and supporting this, supporting the new field, and I think, you know, we should keep moving forward with that. So that's what I would support playing there. And then also, we have the added clause that we wanted to go back to Poppi Yoder. So the other question I have, is some people suggested, you know, if we could take that, the money that we would have spent, and use it for improving, the improvements that we need at Helman Field, so could it be put into the special revenue account that was created?
I'll be brief. I think it's still going to go back. I think it's fine.
Okay. Dr. Rattigan, do you, oh, Steve, I'm sorry, I thought you were done. Sorry. Mine will be sure you need is play here. What was that?
He said play here.
Okay, thank you. So, Dr. Rattigan, you want to add anything?
Sure, I've been getting many of the same emails that the board has been receiving, and as you all know, this was a very hot, passionate topic, and the wave was to stay at Poppi Yoder, as we all know. Now that we've had the experience, as you said, Mrs. Yurley, where people are actually living it and feeling it, it's just unbelievable. And I think the football team was the first to come to that realization, and I said, but this can't just be a decision about the football team, we have to consider the other groups that use the field, we also have to consider the community. So I did reach out to Mr. Benson, I reached out to Ms. Rapp, who's the coach of the cheerleaders, Mr. Benson, of course, is in charge of the marching band, and I've spoken with several members of actually the Yoder family, because I was very concerned what they were feeling. And even though certainly they would have rather stayed there, they know that times have evolved, some of them have even been at the games at Helman now, and they just said they understand where we are, so they would support that and be okay with that as long as the memory of Mr. Yoder was not forgotten. So that seems to be the opinions I'm getting. No one is saying to me, please, 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 stay at Yoder Field.
Okay, so, you know, what, looks like what we're all saying is that we're going to have, we have to unvote this, or we have to vote on this. So we have to vote on it since we voted to do it. So at the meet, at the next meeting, there'll be a motion on there to either, you know, reschedule it, or reschedule whatever, whatever the words need to be, to make us live up to our obligation and to keep the game at Helman. Okay?
I just have a question about this, and I know, like, with football, and I'm assuming with band and cheer as well, there's events that are scheduled, so waiting until the 27th, where then, obviously, you know, it's clear here how we're going to vote, but until it's actually voted on, it's still set to be the 31st at Poppi Yoder Field. Can we make an effort to get this voted on before that, so that it gives everybody involved here a little more time for, to react and make plans with what, you know? The events are happening that night, I mean, I can speak with, from, you know, experience with the football boosters. Right now, they're kind of planning their senior night at both locations, not knowing what's happening. And I would imagine that the band and the cheerleaders are probably, you know, in a likewise situation, so for the sake of giving them a little more time, because basically you're giving them three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of that week, Friday's your game. So, any thoughts on that?
Well, I don't want to speak for the administration, but we've kind of talked about this a little bit, just a few hours ago. So my understanding is, and I think that's a good point, I don't know if you can, if someone, if they can all assume that it's going to be there. It would seem, appear from this, that unless some catastrophic event happens where we're not going to be get-together, that we'll be supporting staying at Helman. But if you want to schedule a special meeting to vote prior to that, that'll be up to you. I, we'll just try to fit that in, and have a five-minute meeting, advertise it, do the things we need to do to make it count, and then I think that's sort of, you know, memorializes what we're trying to do. But I, I mean, if I were them, I'd start, I'd be planning on staying at Helman.
And I think, Mr. Loffler, you and Mr. Rapp have both said to me, you're ready to go either way at either field, so it wouldn't matter to you at this point. You're okay.
We're both.
So do we want to think about this for, you know, seeing tomorrow, see if we can schedule a meeting, or are we saying that we're okay with the presumption that we're moving at its state?
Well, I think the next one would be the 20, next Monday night.
Well, right, we've got enough time to move it, but we're talking, you were talking about other people's plans, not our plans.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying it's as an option, that's our next plan.
There was talk of canceling that meeting, the academic performance, but for next week. However, Dr. Brevard, I think I saw him come in, said that maybe there needs to be a meeting for the ad hoc fundraising, so you could certainly have that Monday night, and you could piggyback a short special board meeting to take that vote next Monday night.
Okay, I mean, that's fine with me, we're all right with that. Just one more meeting. Okay? And you'll let us know? All right?
We don't need to announce it.
Okay. All right. Next item is, there's two change orders, one for the roof replacement at Sellersville Elementary School, these will appear on our agenda. There's a $19,000 credit for unused materials, and that's a change order 5A, and then change order 5B is an additional trailer expense for the district support center for $9,549. Does anyone have any thoughts or questions about those things? Mr. Thompson?
Why are we looking at this now? The rental was actually made last March, wasn't it? That's what I thought I saw.
Right, but we, the rental was made through the contractor, so the contractor was paying for it, so I have, we have to pay the contractor for the rental, so that's why it's, that's why it's going through us, the change order.
But it's still part of the original contract, or not? It's additional?
It's additional. It was not, it was not part of the original contract.
So on the change order, it showed the original- So on the change order, it showed the original, the full cost of it, like?
That's correct. $9,000, $549.
They didn't, they, they need the rest of it?
We, we actually were trying, we actually were trying to find other locate, other locations to relocate the transportation staff without having to do this rental. So at the time, we really were trying to reduce that cost. So that's truly why it was not included. We really were trying to find another apartment location.
So maybe Mr. Spada, if I can help, when I look at, at the change order, is that it's $1,297,600? No? Under original, original contract?
The, the original contract for the build, for the builder, uh, for the general, for the general contractor was $1,297,600,000. That was what, that's what they did. Now they're giving us a change order for $9,000, $549 for the trailer rental. And now the contract pricing for this job will be $1,307,149.
Right. That part I get. But is it because we have more months or what, or that's the part where I don't get? Why are we, why is it more? I mean, they need to have a trailer, I understand, but...
When we originally put the project together, we had every intention of rehoming IT in the high school.
Right.
Some of the transportation staff at the transportation building and some at North. So there was no trailer included in the original contract. It came up after we already had bids. They did want to add to keep the transportation staff on site and that toilet room facilities would be required in that trailer. So at the district's request, we're going back to including that in the project.
All right. All right. I think that's the last thing on my part of this. Oh, wait. Oh, how did I forget this part? Sorry. It drops into the next page. Number six, this will, this is going to be Kathy and Jeff are going to do this. Jeff and Mike are going to do this. This is going to be a discussion of the update of our capital projects five-year plan. So we'll be starting the year 15, 2015, and then moving out five, five years.
Yeah. Uh, we, we took the 2014 projects off the list because they're 95% complete at this point. So the projections go from 2015 to 2018. That list is the same that we spoke about back in, I believe it was February. Uh, the only number that really changed were the stadium upgrades. We took a million dollars off of the $3 million line item that went toward the bleachers. And again, when we discussed the, uh, phase two improvements of the stadium, those numbers were still preliminary. We didn't have the stormwater design, which we're still working on right now, and some of the issues with buildings in sight. So that number is probably going to change at some point, but we need to get to that point with the design to be able to give an updated budget. So we left the placeholder in there of the $2 million. And that's where it's going to stay until we have an actual updated budget to present to the board. Other than that, the, the remaining items, uh, except for, I think, two of them, one of the projects for West Rock Hill Elementary School, there were, they have two failing units in the admin. They're the original equipment to the building. Uh, Jeff, Jeff's staff has replaced, uh, took one of the projects off of this list, which was controls, uh, ATC controls at Bedminster.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. Where, are you in the 16 now?
I'm in the 16 now. Um, I'm just going over the changes that we made to the list. Everything else is the same. One of the projects was taken off was Bedminster Controls. Jeff's maintenance staff performed that over the summer. So that was taken off the list and we added West Rock Hill for the units that are failing there now. Uh, the high school masonry repairs, um, the chimney that's down at the boiler room and the clock tower, there are some issues with the flashing. When you drive by, you'll see that. So we got that on this list. It's better to be proactive with that work before it actually does damage to the masonry and we can't repair it. So that was moved to the 2016. 2017 remained the same. It's, it's basically paving for the most part. And I think that's it for the changes. So what we're going to talk about for 2015 is we have the roof coatings at Central. That roof is out of warranty. We have the roof replace, I'm sorry, the boilers and the roof replacement at the operations building. The roof at the operations building has long since been out of warranty and does have some active leaks. And the boilers at the operations building are lipelong, is what we're calling them. Uh, they require more work to get them to run than they do to maintain. So those two are on the list. Kathy's technology budget remains consistent on all of them. That will be, um, at her discretion. I'm sure that will come back to the board. And the one that was already approved is the, the stadium upgrade for phase two. So that's what we're, we're presenting to the board for approval at the next board meeting so we can get started with surveys and documentation for next summer.
Question on that parking lot issue. We had talked about this both in August and September, or earlier meetings, that there was going to be some opportunity to maybe consider whether or not that parking lot was going to be, uh, first of all, I was hoping to hear a cost benefit analysis on that, that, and I have not heard anything. I mean, I heard that we were thinking about, uh, replacing that parking lot with, uh, keeping the parking lot as it is and running, uh, golf carts or whatever to take people that are handicapped or whatever. But I never really heard a, a cost benefit, uh, explanation of what you hope to buy with that. And, and you did say in the August meeting that that was possibly one of the, that could offer some considerable savings if we chose not to, to do that. I still haven't heard any reasonable explanation of, of pro or con, why do you want to do this?
The, uh, Mr. Thompson, they can, there were considerable savings. It was, it would be in the work, dependent on whether or not the board chose to not build that. If the design was smaller, there wouldn't be as much construction included in the design of the stormwater system. At this point, we have to make a decision to include or not include. We own one stormwater design. If we choose to do the smaller one, we can't do the parking lot, even at a future date. If we do the larger one, we can choose not to build the parking lot, but leave the stormwater system alone, which is sized for a future parking lot, if that's what the board decides to do. So any savings that are going to be associated would be if we built the smaller system and that's the way it was designed up front.
Again, what is the, the benefit for this additional stormwater, for the additional parking lot, the additional parking that we already have, uh, the parking we already have? Or what exactly are we, uh, problem are we solving by doing this?
I don't know that I understood the question.
Are we, I thought you were talking about the study for the, the ENS?
Well, there, there's, there are a couple of it. We were asked to include all the components and that parking lot was one of them. So we have to design for worst case scenario. Worst case is if we include that parking lot. So if we design it for that, we also need additional parking for handicap. And that's something that we're going to have to talk to and get approved at the East Rock Hill Township, uh, the Uniform Code Commission. When we go back for the number of toilet fixtures, the distance from further seats to the toilet room exceeds, uh, exceeds 300 feet. Those things that we need to get approved. We could get a waiver for handicap parking lot, but I don't think that's in our best interest. They may mandate that for us to do that. So if that is, if that's done, we kind of don't have a choice but to do, either designate other spaces and take them away from the regular now or build this lot. So as of right now, you have the option for us to document it and build it, I'm sorry, document it and bid it that way. And if the board chooses to just not build the parking lot, you're saving that cost from building it. The design for stormwater, whether it was a smaller system or larger, there's no real savings in the design, only in the construction of the parking lot and the stormwater system to support it.
Yeah. I thought you had told us back in August that there were some savings possible in the design if we didn't have that, but...
Not the design, again, the, the construction of, if we, if, if you tell me no parking lot, the design is, the capacity is smaller, our piping is smaller, our infiltration beds are smaller. That's where the savings is. But we can never go back and do that without paying for it twice if in five years the board said, "Well, we should have really did that parking lot." Now we're going to go back and do it. Having two separate designs as part of this bid will make it very complicated to work with the Bucks County Conservation District. We'll have to have two completely different designs for them to approve. Whereas if we just go with worst case scenario, it's, here it is, approve it and get it back. And that's, that's our biggest fear is going through that approval process. The additional parking lot, I mean, I think it's been beat up enough between members and if you came to them, anyone who's been at that, uh, first two games, it was pretty, well, pretty volatile. So again, I, that's, it's a board decision when it gets to that level and we have something to actually choose, and that's what we'll be.
Maybe it would help the conversation if you said, do you, do you have an idea of what the possible savings are between doing the smaller stormwater drainage and the larger one? Do you have any idea?
We, we would have to design two to find with, and then we're paying for two design.
Okay.
So, you know, and we're, we're already at this point, if we just design for worst case scenario, there are no additional charges on the design. We'd leave it alone. If you don't want the parking lot, we just don't build it.
Right.
And that won't change.
Yeah. And I think, so, and I think, Mr. Thompson, you were looking for some justification for the parking lot. And so when I was at the...
It was expensive.
Right. Well, and so, I mean, just from my own experience, I was at the first two games and also I've been at the high school, um, it just around, uh, the end of school time and when some buses are coming in for some right after school games. And sometimes they park right to drop the kids off. They park right there in the main thoroughfare and it really, and it does clog things up. And if you, if there were an additional, uh, parking lot or a drop-off that the buses could go up there, drop the students off at the fields and it wouldn't block all the students leaving high school at 2:15 and then north, shortly thereafter, north leaves. So there's, there's that. I mean, and that's just my own personal observation. And then also just from having, my, uh, parents came to one of the games and they both walk with canes and it was, it's a very long walk for them. And even if they didn't need, I mean, they themselves have handicap parking, but if they're coming with somebody who can drive and just drop them off, I think it gives more options for people. I mean, I worry about that parking lot getting clogged, but I think it's, um, it's another possibility. And again, I mean, I, I think if he's saying we, we only do one design, I think it makes sense to do the larger stormwater drainage because it gives us options. And then we can see when the bids come in what the cost of the parking lot is and we can say, you know, if there's not money for that, but then it's something that can be done later. And I think it gives us options. But there, you, you, I know you wanted something about, you know, some reasons for the parking lot. And so there are just two reasons that, just from my own personal observations.
One last question. Uh, Mr. Linden, in one of his remarks in one of the earlier meetings, was talking about the people that park in the fire zone outside the building. Is there any way that this would be eliminated, that, that we would maintain these access for, for emergency vehicles? Or is that just something we're going to tolerate in spite of signage in the contract?
I noticed myself that there's signs out there. Just the other day, I was here for something and it's clearly, it's not only marked with the lines on the, um, driveway itself, but there's now cones marking there, making, it's very clear that it's a fire lane. I mean, obviously people will choose to violate that, but...
Is there something we can do about that or is that just a, oh, well, we're not tolerating this? Is there liability is there for us if anything would happen and there's access blocked?
During, during all times of the business, you're saying?
Whenever they're blocked. And it's mostly coming to others, I think, isn't it?
Has there been a noticeable improvement or any difference since those have been put up and...
I think there's been a big improvement so far. I see that they're still stopping to drop people off and pick up them from that parking anymore. So it seems to be a lot better. Um, if, if we don't notice something changing, we're actually going to put the cones in that space. Obviously if the fire companies come in, they can just push the cones out of the way. So we've noticed some improvement already.
I think part of the problem too is it depends on what time of the day you're here. If you're out in front of the high school directly, um, part of it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the drop-off of like some of the daycare for the children, um, in regard to that. But it seems people are pulling up, you know, when I've seen it, they pull up to the curb. It's not along that drive, um, which is parallel to the Helmand Field. Just one other thing to piggyback kind of on what Mrs. Yarley said. I think when we discussed this, you know, in August, it was before any of us had any idea of what was actually going to happen here with the football game, you know, logistics wise, everything. And obviously opening night, um, you know, there were many, many people here parking, you know, there are just things that normal, the first time anywhere you are, there's things that have to be worked out. But, um, as Mrs. Yarley said, I think by the second game, it was very obvious that we needed more handicap parking and access in there. I think the second game was a little bit better, just there wasn't as much traffic. There, it wasn't as heavily attended. But, you know, now that we've been through two games, I, I think it's given us a better actual picture of what's happening here traffic-wise. And I think that, you know, handicap spaces are definitely something that has to be addressed upon them.
Okay. I want to get us back on track, what we're supposed to be talking about, all right? So thanks for the comments. This is stuff down the road. We just need to stay on the five-year plan here. We went off on the parking lot, we went off on parking. So I think we need to, we have a lot to log, ground and cover yet tonight. So...
I have a question about the five-year plan.
Okay.
Okay. In 2016, the, I'm just wondering what the security upgrades are.
I don't know. Are you done, Mike? With the entire plan?
Yeah. I think we, the rest, again, the rest of it didn't change. We were...
Okay. As long as you're, as long as you've gone through all the years, I think we could have questions, we should have questions.
Prime, we, um, we just want to go a little more detail about 2015 because we do need the board's approval at the next meeting to get started with projects for next summer.
Well, go ahead.
I want to answer, answer Mrs. Yarley's question about the security upgrades. We're currently going through our security, um, review. In fact, we're going to finish that up in November. So once that security review is done, then we'll know what the security project's going to be. But, um, it's off, off the top, it will be cameras, I say, that's one of the things that we're looking at, um, a, a district-wide centralized camera system in all buildings on all fields, um, can be cameras. So that's one of the things that we're looking at.
Is it a possibility that that could be a project for 2015 or is it just not enough time and just to, to finish the security review and then get things moving for that?
It's something we can talk about. Again, we're not going to finish that security review. They're coming in November. Um, so again, they're not going to get anything back to us until December. Is it something we can do over next summer? I, I think we're pushing it. It, it's, it's going to be pushed to get it done over the summer, completely done over the summer of 2015.
So I will... You mean 16?
16, yes.
Okay. All right. But I guess as we have more information, then we can discuss the timeline then. All right. Thank you.
Right. And this is going to segue us, you know, that type of question is going to segue us into the next part of our meeting because if you look at the bottom, you know, the total of the projects going out over the, uh, plan, which is just over 14 million, and that we compare that to what we have on hand right now, you know, that's where the challenges start showing up for us, just how, how we're going to pay for it.
So if I could, Mr. Casper, Mrs. Miller asked last month about the south auditorium addition. And there was a number that came back to application in April 2013 and it was an estimated cost of about $5 million and that did include some site work. It was based upon the same size as North has, about 680 students, seats. So I just wanted to bring that up. You asked about that last month.
So we're not going to look at that for a while, but...
Okay. Does anyone have any further comments on the, Mike, thanks for doing that. Joy, Captain.
Okay. For the, for the minutes of meeting for Mrs. Schuler, um, is it safe to say that we're looking for the board to approve the capital projects for next summer, the 2015 projects? One of those is already started, so it would be the others, um, the coating, the, the boiler, the roofs. Right now, I don't have technology yet for you. That's just something that we, that's a place that we, so, so...
Right. And along those... And along those lines, yeah, we, we should, I think we should, we should vote on 2015, or put it on the agenda, vote on. But I think on the state, the upgrade part of it, you know, we have to remind ourselves that we're agreed to, we're already committed to the restrooms and the concession stand. So wherever that number comes in will be based on, I guess, further, future meetings. Correct? So.
So do we is already designing Phase Two? They're very well into the design phase of this.
But aside from that one, you know, the other things are, I think we should get that on the agenda, because it's almost, this, we're getting, we're at the end of the year already. And on the money side of that, I think that we're still okay with that. So we'll, that'll be coming up next. So then they'll, they'll be on the agenda, this approval of the 15 projects. Okay. Thanks. Anything else before we go to finance? Okay. Thank you.
You gonna have public comment for facilities?